Glendale City Council is now in session. I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under-
Deputy Clerk- All the roll.
Alder Vukovich.
Here.
Alder Gailhard.
Here.
Alder Doherty.
Here.
Alder Bailey.
Here.
Alder Schmelzling.
Here.
Alder Shaw.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We have a number of items on the consent agenda. There were a whole bunch of reports from July as well as August and then meeting, the meeting minutes from our September 8th meeting. Can I get a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please? Moved by Shaw. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda?
Um- Comment on the, um, I, I really look into the police report. And I have to say they're compared to last year and the year before, some of the suspicious activity, that's the one I'm really concerned has gone down. I just, uh, I did a ride along last Friday, which I'll tell you all about it, you know, in a report, but I just think you're doing an awesome job of trying to make sure that Glendale is equitable, but safe and people feel secure being part of it, so.
Any other comments or questions or anything with the consent agenda? Okay, without objection, we'll consider it adopted. Hearing no objections, we'll move on. Next item is an unfinished business item. Carryover from a few meetings ago where the discussion around amending this Schedule A speed limits for Green Bay Road. I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, did we want to go back to public comment real quick? I think we-
Oh, did I miss that? Oh, gosh, okay, sorry. Yeah, thank-
I know, we're trying to get out of here, though.
Well, um, when are we going to do this? And I'll go back to public comment. It's already announced, they introduced this one, so go ahead. Now I'll go back to public comment in a minute.
Oh yeah, simply, this is a ordinance that was, um, the, the item in the speed study was reviewed at the previous common council meeting to lower the speed limit on Green Bay Road from West Brantwood to Good Hope Road from 40 miles an hour to 35 miles per hour.
So, um, we do have now a recommendation from staff to, to change the ordinance. This is based on a discussion we had at our last meeting. Can we get a motion to approve? Moved. Moved by Schmelzling. Is there a second? Seconded by Bailey, and now we'll open up for discussion. Any discussion? Alderman Vukovich, go ahead.
Um-
Microphone.
Oh. I have a lot of problems and issues in my district as well with the, the speeding. The one thing that I found out though is people are gonna, people are gonna drive what they feel comfortable is within, within a, a range without feeling like they are speeding. And that's just in general. I'm, the one thing I'm concerned of is that it is a false safety. If we put it down to 35 and people think, oh, it's gonna be slower. It's not going to be slower. It's not, maybe, you know, some law-abiding citizens might do it. I understand if it was higher, people would pay attention. But I'm just concerned that it'll put a false sense of safety in the 35 to 40, going 35, oh, it's gonna be slower. That's the only thing, because then people are still gonna drive to 45. It's just 10 miles over instead of five miles over. And that's the only thing I just wanted to see what the, well, he's not here, but what that thought is, because that's the only thought that I had.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Alderman Schmelzling?
Okay.
Oh.
I directed something to him.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, the, the general research does say exactly that, that people drive the speed that they feel comfortable with, that a speed study should be done to determine the speed. This one came back 45 miles an hour. Um, the, uh, the election on what the speed limit set is by the common council, though, so you guys can, um, make whatever decision you feel is necessary for the safety of the area. So, but generally, yes, people do drive as fast as, um, the 85 percent, um, percentile, um, which is called a reasonable test, um, based on the speed study.
Thank you. Yeah, I think, um, when I did my research on how you should set a speed using the DOTs, the federal DOTs rulebook on this, it's supposed to be considered not just the speed distribution of free flowing vehicles as was, um, done on that speed study, but also reviewing geographic context, um, crash experience. As we know, there was a fatality there last year on a bicycle. Roadway characteristics such as curves in the road, which there is right at that point. I would also say that the environment just south of there is a 35 and then it bumps up to 40, um, right when we're going past two schools now that we have there since we're put in place since the original speed limit was set. So I, I think there's a number of things beyond the, um, speed distribution of free flowing vehicles. If, um, we have some good upstanders that do go approximately the speed limit, such as typically myself, I think that helps to encourage good behavior. And also, I know I've had requests from residents about, um, the challenges in pulling out of the ASKT synagogue and some of the demographics that are there, not to mention, um, jaywalkers such as myself. Please don't cite me, officer. That, uh, that a lot of people are trying to get to the park. So I think there's more than just the, um, roadway envi- more than just the free flowing vehicles that should be taken into consideration. Uh, we have a 35 on Port Washington Road. And that's set up more like a drag race than even this road. Um, and I think this is definitely a reasonable speed for that space and in light of all these considerations. So, um, yeah, and if I could go whatever speed I want on roads, I'd be going much faster. So that's why we have rules in place, because people are very bad judge of risk when it comes to vehicles. And I can attest to that, having my son going through all of his driver's ed courses right now, which more people should probably listen to. And just a final thought, if someone does get hit, a pedestrian going 50 miles an hour, they have a 75% of death. Well, if they get hit going even 42, let's say five miles over or seven miles over what the speed limit would be, they have a 50% death, percent of death. So it really makes a big difference, a little bit of speed, especially for pedestrians. Thank you.
Ahard?
I just wanted to share my experience, uh, from, uh, my district. We lowered the speed limit on Gene Nicolay from 35 to 30. And, um, my perception of things is that it hasn't changed anything, that people do speed on Gene Nicolay regardless of what the speed limit is. It's a straightaway there now. And I thought to myself, perhaps, you know, we can change the speed limit there, but, um, maybe what we need to do is some type of like round robin enforcement by police, just, uh, taking this, you know, one street, you know, I don't know, a week or a month or something. And, um, doing enforcement there and, and, you know, letting the public know it's like, you know, we're, we're out there, we're gonna do this, um, in various districts, on various roads. Uh, so, you know, be aware. And, and perhaps that would, uh, convince some people to slow down on some of these roads where we've observed high rates of speed. So I just wanted to share that with, uh, with council.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I'm gonna weigh in with the, oh, sorry, go ahead, Alderman Doherty.
Set a question, make sure I get the speeds right. It's currently, when you're coming, as you head to Good Hope, you know, you're coming from Good Hope heading south, it's 40, right? You get at the light.
Until you get to Mill Road.
Always been confusing. I mean, I've lived here a long time.
Brantwood.
It's kind of always a little confusing on when it switches. And people do push you no matter what speed you're going. I think the police department, I've talked to, is saying that people tend to ride those speeds at DOT tests. That's what people are driving. But I kind of changed my mind in the last week a little more to Steve's thinking is at least it also gives us a better chance to ticket somebody. There's five more miles an hour they're over. That should make it simpler for a ticket. And I think the Port Washington argument is a good one. Turn that into a multi-lane, you really could make better time on there and you're not next to houses. We tore all the houses down, you know, between Bender heading north. So I guess I'm more in favor of dropping it, even though it may not have the impact we want. It is a way to at least make, make a statement that we're trying not to have it. Because if you look on further on the other side of Good Hope, that's a lot bigger. There's no houses right there that naturally feels faster. You're just amongst the trees that take our power out. But that was a joke for you, Mayor. But, um, so, yeah, I think the 35 is worth a try.
Um, you know, I, um, I agree, and we're redoing Silver Spring right now because the only, we realized that the only way to bring speeds down on Silver Spring, um, was to completely redesign the road and make it far more difficult to speed and to reckless drive. And I think as we move forward, we may find that there are other major thoroughfares that are gonna end up needing similar kinds of re-engineering and redesign in the future. The reason I believe this is a good move to make here is because unlike, say, Port Washington Road, which is basically commercial almost all the way up, and it's 35 miles an hour, is we have neighborhoods on both sides. We have a park, we have two schools, we have a bunch of synagogues, people who walk to temple. Um, there are so many more. Plus, uh, the bike paths go near there and cross the roads, uh, so you can get from the Oak Leaf Trail over to Clutch Park. Um, I, I think it is, uh, I think it is wise of us to, to lower the speed limit in this stretch. And the other thing is when you're inside cities, even on major thoroughfares in cities, cities are always slower speeds. Right? And if you're on the freeway, you're going 55. That's the supposed speed limit in Milwaukee County on, on any of our interstates. And, you know, when you get off of that, you shouldn't still be going 55 down Good Hope Road and Port Washington Road and Silver Spring, and yet people do. And so I think we need to, and I, I agree with Alder McGailhard that we need, um, maybe to do sort of like round robin enforcement. I like that, you know, doing speed traps at different places around the city. But I've noticed even with the construction zone right now in Silver Spring, I had somebody blow right past me into a right turn lane through a light because I had the audacity to stop because it, right now those lights are only 10 seconds. Literally, the side street lights, they are green for 10 seconds. I know, trying to get out of my neighborhood. And yet somebody couldn't wait. They, I stopped at one of the lights and they went into the right turn lane and blew past me. So we still have the reckless driving even with the construction zone in Silver Spring. So, I mean, I think there needs to be an education campaign. I think part of that maybe also, um, enforcement efforts from the, from the PD at different areas around the city. But I, I think this is a wise move to make, particularly in this particular stretch. I don't think it, I don't think it ever should have been 40 with all of the pedestrians and park and, you know, the, the synagogues have been there for a long time, at least several of them have been there for decades. So I, I think it's, I think it's a wise move. All right, anyone else wanting to speak on this? Okay, we'll go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
opposed, no?
Aye.
And one abstention. Motion carries. All right, now we're at public comment. Glendale residents, business owners and property owners are invited to speak to the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda but are within the city's ability to regulate or control. Is there anyone wishing to speak to a non-agenda item? I don't see anyone recognizing, asking to be recognized here in the council chambers. Anyone on the Zoom wishing to speak, you can unmute, state your name and address. All right, we'll move on from public comment into our new business items. The first item of new business is acceptance of a filing for the 2024 financial audit, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Warwick.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, we have Jake and Jalen both here to discuss the 2024 financial audit. Everyone worked really hard, particularly Jalen, who was here a lot later than we had hoped most nights to get it done, but she did a fantastic job, um, getting the 2024 audit done, and I'll turn it over to Jake to provide his comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I did also provide-
Can you speak into the microphone? Make sure the red, you have to-
All right, is that better? Uh, so I did also bring the packets. I don't know if you can, uh, see within your, um, within your packets. I, I, a little bit of a highlight sheet. Red means go. Got it.
Yeah, red means go. But if you get it, if you tilt it away from you or you get back too far, then it doesn't pick you up.
Yeah. All right, I'll-
We all hate these microphones. It's a, it was a bad investment. Could have gone with a different one. They're too, they're too particular.
Try to-
Yeah.
And right spot here. Just by way of introduction briefly, uh, Jake Lanell here representing Clifton Larson Allen, the auditor, external auditor for the city for the past five years. Uh, just a little background on me. Um, I've been in public accounting for, uh, over 20 years, all of that dedicated to state and local government. Uh, so this, this line of work is what myself and our staff specialize in. Uh, we, we work with many communities within Wisconsin as well as across the country, uh, performing this type of work. So as we go through the audit results, I, I am on purpose keeping it very high level, but if you do have questions on any of the reports that we issue as a result of our work or anything along the way, feel free to, to pipe up and we can talk through that. Also, just very briefly, wanted to touch on, um, the team members that are included. Uh, I'm representing the entire team here, but, uh, we do have a, uh, staff that works with Jalen as well as other members within, uh, city management to get through this audit process. Again, those team members are also specialized in state and local government to be a, a good resource for your team throughout the year as well as during the audit process. Um, as it relates to the actual audit, uh, results, I'll, I'll start with the results and we can talk through some of the details. Uh, the opinion that we're issuing or that we have issued as a result of the work we've performed is an unmodified opinion, or what's commonly referred to as a clean opinion. So that's the highest level of assurance that we can provide you as a third party that those financial statements are appropriately stated and that they represent the true activities of the, of the city for the year. So, uh, that's common for the city as of late. Uh, we've, we've issued that clean opinion, uh, for the past several years. Our, our work that we do as, uh, to be able to get there, what we're really, what we're really doing is testing the processes and procedures that your staff have in place to bring all the financial information for that, uh, year ended 12/31/2024, uh, together and, and seeing that it's appropriately stated and aligned with all of the required reporting standards, both at the state level as well as at the national, uh, reporting level. So, uh, to be able to, to test that work and see that it's appropriately supported. Uh, one new area that affected the city this year, uh, was related to how compensated absences are reported. The national guidance around that, uh, updated a little bit, and the policies that you had in place needed to be evaluated against the new guidance. As it, as it, uh, as you went through that evaluation, there wasn't any new, uh, liabilities that were required as a result of that evaluation, but you were able to perform that work, reach those conclusions and effectively implement the new standards. So that's good. Part of our audit results also focus on the estimates that you have in place as it relates to bringing all that information to close as of the end of the year. The most significant is related to your other post-employment benefit liabilities. So for retirees, the health insurance that they can carry on after they retire from the city. Uh, you get an actuary to, uh, perform a study on that every two years to assess the impact of that. And then that information is, uh, brought into your financial statements as well. So as we perform our work around those estimates, knowing that, uh, these are estimates as of point in time, what we're really looking to do is, uh, see that those are appropriately, um, reflecting the history that the city has had as well as in line with what we'd expect from an industry standard. So, uh, no changes or, or, uh, concerns around the methodologies used are very consistent with what we'd expect to see for, for governments of your size. Um, if we did have anything that was particularly sensitive or unique as it relates to the city's operations or how financial information is portrayed, uh, we'd make you aware of that as well. But again, uh, what we're seeing within the accounting policies and procedures is very consistent with what we'd expect to see for municipal reporting. Um, also included as part of our, our letters to you, um, as a result of our work, is any type of adjustments, uh, that have been made as part of the audit process. So we make you aware of those so that you're, you're aware as the financial information that you're receiving throughout the year is getting updated and, uh, modified for changes in estimates and those types of things. That can occur during the close process as well. So as we performed our audit work, we worked with your team to get anything that was required to be posted, um, trued up before the, before those final documents were, were prepared. Um, and we, we just make you aware of the entries through, through those letters. In addition to that, if there's small items that don't require adjustment but should be noted in terms of just the level of, of activity, uh, we make you aware of those as well. We did have a couple of minor items, um, to include in the letter. Though, we did not, um, we did not request the city post those items because they were small in nature and they related to years past activities. So as of the end of 2024, those will no longer carry forward into future reporting periods. So all is kind of trued up by the end of '24. We just make you aware that those previous items existed. Also included within those letters is management's representations around, uh, the facts that they've provided us all of the information needed to perform the audit, they, that the financial statements are, are clear and, um, complete to their knowledge as well. And then if we did have any disagreements or difficulties in counterperforming the audit, uh, we'd be required to report those here today, but honestly, we'd be reaching out well ahead of today to resolve those. Uh, so no matters to report related to that. Um, and then finally, uh, as a, as a result of our audit, we also issue a management letter, or really, um, matters that affect internal controls. So as I, I mentioned, we did, um, adjust or propose adjustments during the audit process. And so our recommendations are really focused on bringing those adjustments into the normal close process, uh, so that they're, they're part of that normal reporting period and, uh, don't extend beyond the, the start of the audit. So, uh, those are really where our focus is. And then in addition to that, we have what I'd call kind of a standing comment with the city related to segregation of duties. And really, it's acknowledging the fact that you have a small finance team here. And as you're reviewing the financial information that you receive, you gotta keep that in context from the standpoint of, um, uh, one person is taking processes throughout the process and really kind of taking it each step along the way. Just be aware of that because it's common in, at a municipality this size to have a very lean, mean, finance team. But, uh, just be aware that that's part of, part of the, uh, control process that you're, you're overseeing. So, um, that's really the, the results of the audit. I did just have a couple of closing items related to, um, what's next. And so, you know, as we're presenting here, the, the final kind of clean results here related to the audit. Uh, there was a new, uh, requirement related to the ARPA funds this year. Uh, we are in the very, uh, closing steps of that as well. Um, we, we do not have any findings beyond what we've talked about here today in terms of recommendations or, or adjustments, anything along those lines. So, um, those will be finalized before the end of the month, um, and we'll be able to provide those as well. Um, but that's really just to meet your requirements in accordance with, uh, the federal guidelines related to use of those, uh, COVID-19 funds. So that, that, that kind of takes us through the historical. This is also a chance, if there's things that, uh, you know, you, you're aware of that may impact the financial audit in the future, uh, certainly we could talk through those, uh, now, or, you know, it's really just a standing offer to be available to this, to this council in terms of things throughout the year or, you know, questions or concerns as they come up. I, I do have my contact info at the, as, at the closing slide. You're, you're always able to, to reach out directly. With that, I'm happy to take any questions.
As far as the 16 adjustments you did end up, you know, you know, proposing were made, was anything out of that ordinary? Is that pretty much what happens every year when, you know, in a normal year?
Yeah, so of the 16, there were a number of those that were actually prepared by your staff. They were just done after we started our work.
Okay.
Um, so we did note those, and I would say those, you know, could probably just be moved up in time and they wouldn't be like a recurring type thing. There are a few entries that, um, we have historically just been a part of our, our close process. And then maybe just one or two entries that were unique, like with ARPA funding this year, getting the revenue recognition to line up with the actual expenditures that you incurred during the year. That was something that we assisted with and proposed an entry towards. So it's kind of a combination between recurring with your staff, uh, recurring with us, and then unique with us. The unique ones are hard to predict because it, you know, it's, it's something new. It's something that, you know, you, you may not have seen before from a- Feel like I'm getting off the page.
So from compared to other years where we've had some challenges, it sounds a lot better. And entries, just to set your bells, a lot of times you pick a date and after that, you're still working on it internally in, in the company side, if you will, and you find things or you finish things. Those entries get booked by the accountants, but it's not, it, there's no surprise. You did the work for them. So, okay, that's normal. And the segregation of duties, we always, I think we'll probably have that comment no matter what happens. But is there any smaller list of things we could have that would say, okay, there's 50 areas that are a problem. Could we address some of them if we, if we magnified that a little tighter? Is there anything, you know, or some that you think are bigger than others? Because one thing to say, okay, got segregation duties. Another one is, well, okay, what are those and could we fix some of them?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, and I'll, I'll kind of give a bit of context around that comment. We have kind of three levels of which we could report that comment. And the level that, that you're in is the middle level. So-
Okay.
Some of the more significant things that you might say, ooh, this is, you don't want this to be done by one person alone. Those have already been taken care of, which is why you're kind of in that middle tier. Um, so what, what remains is more of the, you're not going to hire somebody and have that cost just to have two people involved in the process, that kind of thing. So-
If somebody write the checks, it's also due to bank rec.
Right.
Okay.
Right, good.
Didn't write fast enough. I have one more. I didn't finish my own note. Go, go ahead.
Let me know if you think of it. We'll come back to you. Anyone else wanting to speak? No other questions? You got one more chance, Jim. You can always reach out to Jake afterwards.
We're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Jake.
Hats off to having this done, you know, in a timely manner.
Yeah.
I know it's easier on the, on the CPA firm too, so.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Jake. Appreciate it.
Yeah, again, please give all the credit to Jalen. She's the one that worked on this countlessly to get it done, so.
Thank you, Jalen. Right, we will move on. Next item, which is, uh, an authorization to execute an amendment to the tower and rooftop lease at 7,007 North Range Line Road.
Uh, so T-Mobile approached the city about extending the current agreement in place for a tower top. I don't know if that's the proper term here. Cell tower, um, which is currently on top of our existing water tower on Range Line Road. Um, the extension would include the same price and, or same rent that we received today, which is around $1,800 with 10% escalator increases on an annual basis, um, for revenue around $21,600 per year in the first year.
Any questions? Yeah, go ahead, Alderman Doherty.
As, I've been a long time since I negotiated these. As far as market rates, how do we know we're getting market rate and we're getting escalations? It makes sense because I don't, I don't know anymore, but used to do that where you tried to make sure that the going rate, you know, if you're in a long-term one, that you've kept up with it.
Yeah, this was the same price that we had before. We did look at a couple of other water tower lease agreements to see if we were in the ballpark of it. Uh, you'll see the next one's coming up as $2,500 per month. That is a standalone tower, uh, the property, so that's why we require them to pay a little more on that one, because this one's on top of the tower.
Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
All right, I'm messing up the mic. Um, I was just curious, with the standalone tower, they're eventually going to take down the ones that are on top of the, um, water tower today? Because really then it's almost like they're getting a two for one.
Uh, those are two different companies. This is T-Mobile. The other company is, I forget the name of it, bringing it up.
Okay, that answers that question.
So there, there'll be this one and then the additional one also. So there'll be two different agreements.
Two different agreements, okay.
This one is a continuation, so essentially net neutral just extends the term for, um, four or five-year terms. Um, and then the item on the next agenda is for the standalone tower with BTS. And that is an annual fee of $30,000 with, I believe, 10% escalators and a one-time $5,000 payment upon execution of the agreement.
I'll wait on that next topic until we get to them. Thank you.
All right, anything else? Alderman Vukovich, did you have a quick? Okay. All right, can we get a motion then to approve the First Amendment to the Tower Lease? Moved by Alderman Schmelzling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second about Alderman Bailey. Any further discussion? Okay, all this in favor of approving? Aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. The next item is a multi-year lease with BTS Towers for the exact same location. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Warwick.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Kennedy. So this is a pretty similar lease. However, it is again for a standalone tower for $2,500 per month with a 5,000 one-time payment. The initial agreement is for five years with nine successive terms available and a rent increase annually of 10%. It is a standalone tower. The T-Mobile lease is the space on top of the existing tower. So those are the differences, but it's the same property on Range Line Road.
Yeah, just real quick on that one. So do we have any idea what this is going to look like? I I can't imagine there'd be a lot of concern from the neighbors, but that is my district over in Rochelle. If it's right next to the water tower and it's pretty much the same, then I don't see issues. But if it's something else, I guess that would be make a bigger concern.
I forget the exact height of it. We did look at that in the negotiation and you're the one, Nathan, that negotiated the majority of this. I forget, we can give you the exact dimensions and locations of it, but it's nothing that's taller than the existing tower.
Okay.
I did take a look at this property on Google Maps. And I guess my concern was, I guess, it's sort of what Alderman Schmelzling was alluding to is that this might be this big ugly thing, you know, what we might want to hide it with shrubbery, that sort of thing. I don't know if that's something that's been thought about in terms of negotiation. But to the extent that it's a standalone tower and, you know, it might be an eyesore, we might consider asking them to hide this with, you know, Arbor V-Tie or something.
So I guess by saying standalone tower, this is literally a pole. So it's not like a tower that will be out there that you see those big tall ones in the city. It's a pole that will not be visible.
The water tower itself isn't even anywhere by the road. It's back behind the surgical center. Kind of between that and the Aurora Medical Center.
Okay, that's a look like a palm tree. Sorry, just had.
It has been done.
Did you have those?
All right, yeah, I'm not I'm not concerned if it's similar in height to the water tower because the tower is already there, so. But yes, I do know it's still a vacant property there, so anyways, thank you.
We get a motion that BTS Towers?
Moved.
By Alderman Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving? Aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Our next item is the 2026 budget schedule. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Warwick.
Thank you, Mayor Kennedy. I'm just bringing up the memo real quick. Before the council is the proposed budget schedule for 2025. Of course, everything has to be adopted and in place by January 15th, which is the deadline to determine property taxes. Sort of working backwards from that, we would assume the adoption of the city budget on December 8th.
Say that date again.
December 15th.
Okay, I thought you said January 15th.
Sorry, if I said January, I meant December.
He did, okay. Okay.
Sorry, I was looking at January 1st, which is the start of the new year, and I must have sort of
That's okay.
used those lines. So I apologize. December 15th is the deadline to determine the property taxes. Moving backwards, the 8th would be the proposed adoption of the budget with the Budget Public Hearing November 24th. And November 10th, we would review the draft budget at the Common Council meeting. This schedule is pushed back a little bit. There's a conference that I'll be at at the October, 2nd October meeting. So that's why I pushed it to the first meeting in November.
Who reviewed the budget the first meeting in November, adopted the second?
We'll have the public hearing at the second, which is the Monday prior to Thanksgiving, and then adopted at the first meeting in December.
Okay, that I'm going to tell you right now, if we don't have a budget until the 8th, tax bills aren't going out until probably the 20th, 21st, 22nd. We are going to get complaints from residents. We usually, there was a time, yeah, we heard this the first, Joanne knows this, the first couple of years I was mayor, tax bills always were out the week after Thanksgiving. And we had a snafu, the first year we had the previous city administrator, and our bills went out around December the 5th or so. We were getting calls for the first few days of December because the bill, if we don't send bills out, because we have a whole bunch of people that want to pay them by December 31st so that they can be a tax deduction for this year. And if they're not getting their bills until after Christmas, it's going to make it really, really hard for them to. We also know we don't have the best mail delivery service, right? So if you put them in the mail the 20th, 21st, 22nd, people aren't going to get them till after Christmas.
I mean, we get calls in November if bills aren't out, so people do get a little. Yeah.
Can we approve it in November? Can we approve it at that November meeting, the night of the hearing? Because the school board, when I was on the school board, the night of the public hearing was also after the hearing. We would approve the budget.
If the Common Council wants to do it, that hasn't been past practice. That's why I didn't put it on there. But if you want to amend the budget schedule to approve it the night of the public hearing, I believe we can do that.
I think it makes sense. We still have a problem. Well, we'll be back to this anyway. You know what I mean?
Right.
So I think it's, there's no danger in doing it that way.
All right, so we're gonna.
Also, you won't have a full court, you know, a full council on the on the 8th.
Yeah, you won't be here on the 8th, right? Yeah, okay. Okay.
But we'll get the items out to you much quicker than this. The schedule is a little pushed back simply because there's a conference on that date for the second meeting in October. So I wouldn't be here to present the budget on that date. That's why it's sort of pushed back. But we would have the items out to you much quicker.
So any other? All right, so we would be looking at, can we get a motion then to approve the budget schedule as presented with one exception? And that is that the Budget Public Hearing on November 24th would also be adoption of the city budget, which would allow us to then move pretty quickly to process the property tax bills. Can we get a motion to approve the schedule as presented with the one exception that the adoption of the budget would be on November 24th, the night of the Budget Public Hearing?
Moved.
Move, Alderman Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Schmelzling. Any further discussion? Yeah.
I give you enough time. Okay. Yeah, I just want to, you know, we we put, yeah, it's easy for us to say we have to have these, these, you know, the the residents are going to be upset. But does he realistically have enough time? That's why I'm asking him if he does. And I would prefer him tell that's tight or whatever. And we know right now that this is a bad decision. And what we could do is have a emergency meeting and just do it over Zoom if we need more time. I'm just saying there's other options than trying to force you to do it.
It's not a tight schedule. The only issue becomes if the public hearing, if there's an item or a budget that needs to change, that can create some complications. So I would just ask if we're going to do this, that we make sure that we've have all the information read, understood. Any questions, come to me. We could all meet individually before all that stuff happens and that staff gets you guys the proposed 2026 budget as quickly as possible. So as long as all that stuff occurs and we have everything sort of squared away prior to that 2024 public hearing on 11/24, then we should be good to go.
We got to do our homework too.
Right. And and honestly, for Carl, he has had the budget done by October 20th in order to be able to release it. So it doesn't, this changing when we have the vote on it, I don't think impacts the ability of the city administrator. He has had the budget done by October 20th according to his calendar, so. And it's a calendar he's presented us, so. All right, any other questions or discussion? All right, did we have a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
Yes, we did. Okay. Okay, moved and second. We were in discussion. All right. Any other discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the schedule for the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is amending Chapter 8.5 Recycling. And I'll turn it back over to.
Oh, Mr. Emick, come up for this.
We'll turn it over to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Emick.
Evening. This is just a change to our current ordinance in regard to the WDNR's requirement to update our ordinance that oversees the us as responsible units affected recycling programs and other aspects of the law. So really, just a formality, but not a big deal. But we do get a grant every year from them roughly in the amount of $61,000 back, so kind of a nice deal.
Any questions for the Director of Public Works? Okay, can we get a motion then to adopt the ordinance for Title 8, Chapter 5 on Recycling as presented by staff?
Moved.
Move, Alderman Doherty. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carries. Our final item of new business is in agreement with Camosi Construction for cost estimation services for the Glendale PD, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Warwick.
And I will punt this one to Chief.
Well, the chief's doing this one. All right, chief. All right, Chief Fugman.
So we've been meeting with FGM Architects quite a bit over the last several weeks. And part of that process early on was them recommending going for a pre-construction cost service from Camosi Construction. We had met with them and that's what this is for. They would provide the detailed cost estimates for the construction budget as the project documents are developed by the architects. This contract would also include a suggested construction phasing plan and our staff relocation plan designed to minimize interruptions at the PD, which obviously, we're going to try to vacate the building as much as we can, if not completely during this this portion. We did add in there, through this process, we have talked about solar panels with the architect just to keep everyone informed as of right now with our estimate budget that they deem that as feasible. But we're continuing to evaluate that as this option continues to go along as we start getting more of these detailed costs of the of the project. Otherwise, that's that's what this is for.
All right, thank you, chief. Are there any questions? Quick on that. Alderman Schmelzling, go ahead.
Just one of the things like with the whole solar analysis, you know, we've looked at that first with City Hall and then we tried to get a grant with the Public Works Building. And now with, you know, the police department, the thought was that might be something that would be feasible. I guess I'd just be interested, and I know I had similar questions when we were looking at the fire department. I guess I'd just be interested in seeing what those numbers look to be, like what the internal rate of return would be and, you know, where that cutoff point would be. I know one of the things we are trying to do is be more sustainable as a community. And when I look at the other neighboring communities like Wade Fish Bay, you know, I they've they've found ways to do it. I don't know if they've been using grants or what the case might be. But I'm just curious what we could do to offset our long-term costs.
Yeah, I'd agree with Steve on that, just saying, you know, people, a lot of different companies will do it, will do that without, you're not paying them. You're saying, what would it, what would the payback look like unless we're not a big power user? So I get it. But I'd like to see something from some, maybe even a couple firms that put in a bid to say this is what they think they could, what it would run or what kind of return it would generate, you know, is it 30 years or whatever? But I mean, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, we'll continue talking with them. I know the big part right now is when they came in and looked at our mechanicals and they're going to start putting those numbers together. I know the HVAC portion of this project is going to be substantial. So I think that's when they started looking at the goals of the project and looking at our number we're looking at. They're kind of saying we may need to select what are, what's going to meet our goals. But we'll definitely keep that in touch and keep talking to them about those potential numbers.
Because it's, you know, it's an upfront cost and not many, I would say, buildings have the longevity that we'd be looking for for a police department where we wouldn't expect to be, you know, doing that again for the next 30 years, so. Or at least we potentially designed something and so it could be added. I know that with the increase in electricity demand in Wisconsin, I can't imagine the cost is going to be going down anytime soon.
Yeah, we'll definitely keep that conversation going with them.
Other discussion? Get a motion then to Lucy?
Moved.
To Alderman Schmelzling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman Gelhard. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving, please say aye.
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 Close? Motion carries. All right, that concludes all of our business. We now have Commission Committee, Board, and Staff Reports. I don't have any reports since our last meeting. The North Shore Fire Department normally meets on the second Tuesday of every month, which would have been two weeks ago. However, this month, they asked to have the meeting on September 30th. So the North Shore Fire Department will be meeting a week from tomorrow at 8:00 AM over Zoom. You're all welcome to attend that. It is a public meeting. That's all I have in my report. I will now ask Deputy Clerk, is there anything to report?
Out at this time.
Thank you. Chief, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
All right. The Administrator?
Oh, yeah, we have a job advertisement out there for the city clerk position. So if you know anyone that would fit that position well, please encourage them to do that. We also have a job advertisement out for an administrative assistant position. We promoted Emily here in the office from the administrative assistant position to accounting clerk. So we now have an open administrative assistant position because of a promotion.
Thank you. City Attorney? All right, thank you. Number one.
Just, there's a couple of things that I've done. I went and did ride-alongs with the fire department and the police department. And I think the fire department the last two weeks and the police department last Friday. I suggest everybody go do this because it's is, and not just a couple hours, like literally, you have to do a whole shift. Because the one or two hours doesn't like really get you to where you need. Now, I am a jinx when it comes, again, when it comes to the fire department because they normally have 12 calls, you know, average when I go. They always have one when I go, so I don't.
You need to go more.
Yeah, it's like I need to go more. Really eye-opening for the police department, ride-along that I had on Friday. Obviously, I'm going to argue with people about procedure, protocol, just to understand what is going on and why they do it. And I think the officer, what's his name? You know, I don't remember. Azario? Officer Azario was amazing. He explained well. He took my concerns into consideration, showed me a bunch of equipment. And the one thing that I loved, I asked him, in the utopia world, what would you want in your, what are you missing or what do you want in your police department? And his answer was, I think Glendale provides us with everything we need. I can't think of anything. So that means that we, that he wasn't being greedy. He just feels that all of the stuff that we are providing is what they need and to do their job properly. So I had a great time with him. He has commissioned me to try another thing. I don't know if I'm going to do that, but it was a great experience and I think I was out from 5 until a little after 11.
Thank you. Number two?
Got a chance to go to the Fall League of Cities meeting. They happen to be held in Milwaukee. John Gelhard and I went and I couldn't find you. It's nice to know. And it was, it was good. I didn't think it was quite as many people as the prior one. It's the only second one I've been to. But picked up a lot of things and a couple of them I'm going to try with Carl or at least talk about more. One was just some AI uses, things like you already got public data. We present our entire financial statements. You could dump AI against three years of financials and have it say, what do you see for trends? So there's some things like that I want to try. I'll put a little time myself in on too. But it was quite interesting and the vendor really walked around and saw all the vendors and found some interesting things. I got a whole folder of stuff to bug Charlie about and bug Carl about. So I think it was worth, it was worth going, especially being in town. It was pretty easy and pretty cost effective.
Thank you. Alderman Gelhard?
Yeah, I would just reiterate what Alderman Doherty said. It was quite informative. I had never gone to one of those meetings before and very informative sessions that we attended meant a lot of the vendors that we, that the city uses actually and got a little head start on some of the projects that they've got planned for us. So it was very worthwhile and I'm glad I went. And that's all the report I have.
All right, thank you. Alderman Bailey?
Boring. Nothing to report.
Okay. Alderman Schmelzling?
Conference I'm going to is later, so I'll wait till I talk about that one. Thank you. Nothing to report.
Alderman Masha?
No.
All right, that concludes our reports. We are noticed to go in. All right, that concludes our reports. We are noticed to go into closed session specifically to discuss with our legal counsel a strategy within a case regarding the placement of two sex offenders on Silver Spring Drive in Milwaukee, right across the street from Glendale. And I would ask for a motion to convene in closed session, please.
So moved.
Move Alderman Gelhard, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Bailey. All those in favor of convening in closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. We are now in closed session. And when we exit closed session, we will not have any any action to take. So anyone there that's being put into the waiting room, it will bring you back into the meeting, but it'll be so you can hear the motion to adjourn. Okay? All right, we just legal case that we're involved in. The motion was made by Alderman Gelhard and seconded by Alderman Shaw to reconvene in open session at 7:08 PM. The vote was unanimous. We are now in open session. We have nothing else on our agenda to discuss today, nothing to vote upon. So can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
Moved.
Move by Alderman Doherty to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gelhard. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Close, no. We stand adjourned at 7:09 PM.